Are we ready to begin?
The time is six thirty-one, and I hereby call the March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Nicole, may we have roll call, please?
Yes. I'm sorry. Commissioner Eric Altman.
Present.
Commissioner Andrew Goff.
Present.
Vice Chair Devett Muhammad.
Present.
Youth Commissioner DeAndre Lindsey.
Present.
Commissioner Crystal Malari and Chair Brando Cruz are absent this evening.
All right, I'd like to open it up for public comment. This time is reserved for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each, and it's requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items on the agenda should comment via email prior to the start of the meeting or to verbally comment on the item during the meeting. Click Raise Your Hand button if joining by Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone when the item is called. The Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the Planning Commission does not respond to public comment at this time. Speakers are asked to please speak clearly, provide their name. Any handouts for distribution of the Planning Commission must be emailed by three PM on the meeting day. Do we have anybody for a public comment? Anybody on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom.
I close public comment. And I move on to agenda changes. Director Cooper, do we have any agenda changes?
Vice Chair Muhammad, we have no agenda changes tonight.
Thank you. We'll move on to consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve?
I motion to approve the consent calendar items.
Aye, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Eric Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Andrew Goff.
Aye.
Vice Chair Devett Muhammad.
Aye. Public hearings, next is item number two, a public hearing for Napa Junction Mini Storage Design Permit variance.
Good evening, Vice Chair Muhammad, members of the Planning Commission, and members of the public. My name is William Hee with the Planning Division, happy to give a presentation on the Napa Junction Mini Storage project. So, let's begin with a location map. This is the site that we are talking about for this project. It's forty-four eighty-four Hess Road, and shown in the yellow perimeter here, and it's about eight point four acres. To the north is a construction yard ran by the mayors, and then to the west is a vacant parcel, and then to the south is the future home of the Oat Hill slash Domain Apartment project. And then to the east is the former Napa Junction Elementary School. This is the only photo that I have that's going to have the orientation of north pointing up, because most of the project maps are done with the file pointing east. So, this is so that we get our bearings straight where the project is. So here's a site plan for the project. The project is... Are we doing okay? Is divided into two parcels, parcel A and parcel B. And parcel A is on the west side, and parcel B is more towards the east along Hess Road. The proposed entries are from Napa Junction Road as well as Hess Road. The total number of mini storage units that's proposed for the project is five hundred and forty mini storage units. Here is the project description and zoning information. The project is located in the general industrial zoning district, which permits public storage. And the project is to develop five hundred and forty self-storage units. The project will include site improvements such as new lighting, fence, security cameras, landscaping along the frontages, and also some frontage improvements for public works. The proposed office hours is ten to five on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays for the office, but the storage units will be open seven days a week from five AM to nine PM. The project is being developed by RH Hess Company, and the applicant is here. Here are some site photos of the parcels. This, to the left is the entry for parcel A, and to the right is the office. That office is the only structure that will remain from parcel A, as most of the units or structures in parcel A will be demolished for the development of the new storage units. I have two photos of parcel B, more to the east of the site, and currently parcel B is being used to store boats and RV vehicles. I have several site-specific issues to go over, but they're pretty quick, and I will give an overview of them for each of these specific issues. First of all is demolition. Currently parcel A is being used as a contractor's yard, and the site is going to demolish the two buildings that are marked in red here. One is a very long warehouse building, and another is a more square-ish shed to the northwest. In addition, the fence and the interior will be demolished, and also a lot of the asphalt parking will be removed to make room for the new storage units. The applicant will be required to get a demolition permit and as well as approval from the air quality district to make sure that everything is safe. Site improvements, the site will provide a new sidewalk along Napa Junction Road and Hess Road. There will be landscaping along the Napa Junction roadside as well as the Hess roadside. The landscaping along Hess Road would be about ten feet, and the trees proposed for the site is crepe myrtle, columnar oak, and coastal live oak. The landscaping along Hess Road will be a red fultenia. Along with landscaping, the applicant will provide new frontage to both the street sides, including new sidewalks, and they will underground a overhead utility that runs along their site along Napa Junction Road. So here is the overhead utilities that is running along Napa Junction Road. I don't know the exact linear feet, but that is the... That's it's shown in parcel A and parcel B. The next issue is that the site is within the Alquis Priolo earthquake zone. There are several sites in the city that are within the zone, and state law prohibits human occupancy of structures within fifty feet of the active fault. So the applicant has actually conducted a geotechnical survey and found where the fault lines are. These are shown in red, and then also we did a kind of like a buffer that shows the fifty-feet buffer along those two fault lines. So it limits the types of use that this site can use, but one thing we know for sure is that mini storage is not something that people live in, so that's a use that he can't do. Security for the site. The applicant has agreed to provide eight-foot-tall steel tube gates along the Napa Junction Road gates, and also they will provide a perimeter fence of chain-linked with wooden slats or an equivalent along Hess Road. To support the fences, there will also be the landscaping along Hess Road, and there will be cameras. And that's... That's all we have for security. And then, oops, sorry. This project does include a variance that is requested. We don't get too many projects that request variances, but it is a tool that can provide some relief to property owners that have sites that are, you know, topographically challenged, so that it's a little bit different from other sites that makes it so that they can't enjoy their site fully or develop their site fully as compared to other sites within the zone. So this variance came about because the municipal code requires setbacks along corner lots to be landscaped with fifteen feet, and the applicant requests the reduction from fifteen feet to ten feet along the Hess Road frontage. Parcel A consists of five point eight acres, and parcel B, of which the five point eight acres, three point two nine acres are on the hillside towards the west, which makes it very difficult to develop. In addition, as I mentioned earlier, both parcels include the Alquis Priolo earthquake fault zones, which prohibits human occupancy. So first of all, they have a hillside, which makes it harder to develop, and then they also have a earthquake fault line, which limits the number of uses they can do. So it kind of fits the variance application where this site is a little bit different from their neighbor's sites. Granting this variance does not conflict with the applicable building, fire, and public works codes, and given the topographical constraints, granting the variance of a reduced setback allows the property owner to marginally increase the developable space. Here's a graphic that shows the hillside, which is on the top of the screen, shown in orange. It's about three point two acres. About thirty-eight percent of the entire site is that hillside. And then the earthquake fault zone, shown in the red with the buffer, is about thirty-six percent. So it really limits the developable land there. Okay, moving on. I want to show some of the storage units. So this project is... Is... Consists of these storage units that are ten by ten and all the way up to ten by thirty, actually. So on the left, you have two ten by tens side by side, and then there's a ten by fifteen space, there's a ten by twenty, and then we have ones that are bigger, that's a ten by twenty, and a ten by ten. I have some graphics that shows how they look. And so these are the self-storage units. The applicant has agreed to paint it in a color that's earth tone, that's more similar to the... To the development nearby.
Oh, William, before you move on to impact fees, I'm sorry, would you mind just going back to the site photos?
Sure.
We have a condition seventeen about the renovation of the office building, and
Oh, yes.
it got overlooked in our presentation.
That's right. All right, so site photos. The parcel A office, there's a condition that requires the developer to basically refresh the building and do some aesthetic updates to the building prior to the opening of the storage units. So it's a very old building, and the condition requires aesthetic updates, but it doesn't require, you know, rebuilding the whole building to meet today's code. So that's the condition of approval. So storage units, and then the last issue is about impact fees. So the applicant, first we want to talk about the traffic impact fees. The applicant provided a traffic report that explained the existing site of the construction yard and the boat and RV storage generated about twenty daily trips, and the proposed development, which converts it to all mini storage use, is only nine daily trips. So because the proposed development is actually a reduction in daily trips, this project will not be required to pay traffic impact fees. In addition, because this is a construction of an older site to a new use, the result in employment increases will not result in employment increases, and therefore, the project will be exempt from the general plan update fee, the civic facilities fee, and the affordable housing nexus fees. And that's about it. We did a public outreach, which started in September of twenty twenty-three, and then we also had our usual mailouts to the neighbors as well as our gov delivery emails, and we received no public comments for this project so far. With that review, it's staff's recommendation to approve the Napa Junction Mini Storage Design Permit and variance. The application complies with CEQA as a categorical exemption because it's an existing facility. That's all that I have. The applicant is here, but I'll be here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hee. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Is the applicant going to... Or are you going to speak? What you got first, Rick?
I was just going to wait until after you speak.
I see him do your intro.
Good evening, Rick Hess, thirty-four twenty-three Broadway Suite D five, American Canyon. As you know, we've owned the... Our family's owned this property since nineteen seventy-eight. We spent eighteen years trying to get the development going on the site. We've had the apartments that are underway now, and our goal is to clean up the whole Oat Hill site. The RV park that's there has been there, you know, forty years. Recently, my brother retired from the general engineering and where we had all of our heavy equipment there. The site, as William described it, is very constrained with the earthquake faults. We've had discussions regarding the existing office building there, and because it sits in the earthquake fault zone, my goal is to not have to try to pull some building permit because it would trigger a whole bunch of earthquake seismic retrofit that I'm not sure that we can achieve under today's guidelines. The building's been there, we've had it occupied, it's currently occupied. It's been occupied, let's call it, for forty years as an office. So I have agreed with staff to look at updating the exterior elevations, provided it doesn't trigger fire sprinkler protection and/or earthquake retrofit. But if we can do something exteriorly that will enhance the look of it, I'm certainly willing to work with planning and come with something reasonable for that. The other thing that I wanted to mention is the undergrounding of the utilities. We've... In fact, I just met a couple of days ago yet again with consultants on undergrounding the utilities. There's... They are currently also working on the undergrounding for the apartment project across the street, and this project, I think, is... I'm not sure if we've mentioned, but it will be built in phases. So not all of the improvements will be done in phase one, but we will be continually working on it. PG&E is a long ways out, and I want to make sure that we're going to be able to occupy phase one as we get under construction and get the units ready, even if we're still in the queue for undergrounding. I realize that ultimately, to sign it off, we have to have all of these improvements done, and we're willing to do that. I just want to make sure we don't get hung up with, you know, occupancy waiting on PG&E. But we've hired a company to try to help us expedite it the best we can, and we're diligently moving forward with that. So I think that this is going to be a... You know, we have our RV solar farm that we're getting ready to... Waiting on our grading permit so we can get started this year down on Green Island Road. Hopefully, we'll be able to move some of these older RVs out of here into our new site, which will allow us to clean this up, landscape it, put some new fencing up, and I think it'd be a great benefit to the existing units that are being built across the street as well as with all the new housing. I think we have a demand here, and this would fit in well, given the constraints and the potential uses on this property. I think it's an ideal development and a way to clean this whole project up. So thank you. I'll answer any questions, and that's a pretty straightforward project. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Commissioners? Any questions? Commissioner Goff?
Thank you, William and Mr. Hess. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned undergrounding poles. They're just PG&E poles, or they... Do we know, are they telephone lines? It's just PG&E? They're both? And how many poles are we dealing with there?
I don't know the exact number.
What we have on the... On the east side of Hess Road, which would be on the school property, is one pole that I'm assuming will remain because it's on the school property. There is then a pole at the office. About halfway up the hill is another pole. Those two certainly will come down. And then there is a pole, a third pole, or if you count the school one, it would be the fourth pole at the top of the hill. Currently designed, that pole goes south and across the apartment site, and all of that has to go underground. That pole is scheduled to... It's right at the property line. That pole is scheduled to stay there, and then undergrounding from there up, on up around the bend that will serve going into the apartment project. When we develop that final upper ten-acre piece at the top, then those poles, I assume, will always come down, or will come down and go underground. So there'd be two poles that would come down now with the undergrounding going from kind of property line all the way to the school.
So the one across Hess is on school property, well, city property at this point in time. Then there's one across the street right by the existing office building in that area?
Yes.
So I'm assuming, you know, it's not going to be undergrounded by the city, so it's going to run across the road no matter what, and it's going to have to connect with a pole. So that pole is probably going to stay. It's still going to underground underneath that road.
Yeah, we would be... It's going to be up to the engineers and PG&E, but my understanding is it would be... We would underground under Hess Road.
So you would.
So it would be underground under Hess Road all the way up to...
Yeah, my confusion was on, you know, one of the poles on city property, the other one's on yours. Well, if they don't have to underground, are they just going to leave it and then grow, drop down, which doesn't... I mean, it doesn't take a pole away.
I'm going to... I'll say it again. I've been preaching this, and Brent can tell you. I've been preaching for fifteen years that we need to have an underground ordinance so that we can begin to clean up Highway twenty-nine. It's when you put the burden all on individual properties, all we're getting is a piecemeal. I think the city should take the lead and begin the engineering, and then you collect your fees and start at the south end of town and say, "Let's go." And do whatever we can. That's the only way that we're ever going to clean it all up.
Okay, thank you. I got a couple of other questions. One is on sidewalks. How far up the hill are you going? I know your land extends quite a bit past where you're actually going to be doing the development. Are you going to go all the way up to the edge of the lot?
No.
No?
We have... The sidewalk is... We're putting sidewalk on the apartment side that goes from the bottom of the hill all the way to the top.
Other side of the road, okay.
On the north side of the street. We're only taking it up to past the entrance because it's all hills. There's no... There's nothing to go to there.
Okay.
We're begrudgingly putting sidewalk along Hess Road that... All it goes is down to the mayor construction yard.
Because there's no sidewalks at all on Hess Road.
There's no sidewalk there now, but who's going to be... Who's going to need the sidewalk to walk from the mini storage down to the construction yard? And there's other... There's mini storage in a construction yard. It's not like it's being used.
Right.
To me, it makes more sense that at some point on the ballfield in the school side is where there should be a sidewalk, and let me landscape the whole thing on the north side. And I'd love for you to make that recommendation tonight so I could eliminate that sidewalk that I think is unnecessary.
One other item is on fencing. Again, it's kind of the same question on how much of the lot are you going to fence? Is it just going to be around the storage areas? Or are you going all the way up the hill and across and back down?
No, what we'll do is down on the... On Napa Junction... Or I'm sorry, on Hess Road, we'll fence that all the way down, and then we're going to put the fultenia hedge there that will ultimately give us, you know, cover of that whole thing, and I think will look good. Something to keep in mind is where the current sidewalk or curb and gutter is on Napa Junction going up, our property line probably sits back in twenty-plus feet from where that curb is. We've agreed to go ahead and landscape and maintain what is city property. We're going to landscape all of that. We're putting our gates all the way back into... On our property so that we have enough queuing of any traffic coming off of Napa Junction Road. But we'll maintain that, all of that landscape for the city. And so the sidewalk, we're only taking up so high. As far as the fence goes, again, we'll fence it in where we have security gates going in, but our units will back right up to the hillside. And even though our preliminary plan showed that a fence goes all the way across, this thing has evolved, and because of fire department, instead of having a solid units all the way, every so many feet, we have a five-foot break, so we don't have to do the fire sprinkler of these. So our idea is that we'll fence that five foot at each one of those intervals. It doesn't make sense to throw a fence all the way across there.
Okay, so no fencing on the back?
Well, it will either be the metal building that will be ten feet or the eight-foot fence, so there'll be no access that on the west side. We have solid fence on the south side, and we'll have solid fence on the north and south side and east, and the west will just be... It will be a solid surface that nobody could get access. And then we'll have security cameras as well, you know, all of our normal security.
That's it?
Thank you.
Commissioner Goff? I'm sorry, Commissioner Altman? Thank you, Commissioner.
Just a simple one, and you have sort of, between you and William, kind of somewhat addressed it, but I want to just be certain I'm clear in understanding. So the existing office building, which has been there for 40 or whatever years, is within the fault zone?
Yes.
And there is no requirement that it be abandoned and moved when you're doing a redevelopment?
No, it's grandfathered in.
Okay.
And when we took the permit out and built it way back then, we didn't even know there was an earthquake fault there.
Right, yeah.
And so, you know, it's kind of like all the buildings that's sitting on the San Andreas Fault right now, up and down, all these earthquake faults. Now we know where they're at.
Right.
But they're grandfathered in, we can continue to use them.
Yeah, okay. I just, I thought that's kind of what you alluded to.
Yeah.
I just want to, because, you know, I'm looking at this and I'm going, "Well, jeez, got to move that building, get it out of the earthquake zone, right?" Because somebody's going to be in that office, and so it is, it's not inhabited like a home, but for, you know, eight, 10, whatever hours a day, somebody's going to be in there. Is that?
Just so you know, originally, my idea was we were going to take the building down, and then I'd build a new building, which significantly smaller for the type of office that we really need.
Right.
But I can't build it in the earthquake fault zone, so we're kind of left with, okay, what do we, let's use what we have that's a permitted use right now. And then they've been twisting my arm to get me to dress it up that I've agreed to do.
Keep twisting. But yeah, no, I mean...
Hey, when my dad built that 40 years ago, that was the...
It was state of the art, yeah.
State of the art.
Yeah, no, I get it. I get it. It's, that's really was the only thing that I had. I mean, for me, the request for the variance on the setback, given the constraints of the property, makes a ton of sense. You know, it's not like you're saying, "Hey, give me no setback." I mean, you're saying, "Cut it from 15 to 10, and give me a little bit of validity to, you know, throw a couple of more units in there with that extra five feet." So I get that. That makes sense. I will say, your initial thought that you just mentioned of, you know, abandoning that building, if as you continue to look at this, there's a chance to even put the office building kind of further up?
We've looked at it, but...
It just looked like there might be a spot, kind of, you know, they're coming, the quakes are coming this way, the fault lines, and the building's here. It looked like something up this way. I can't, you know, without maps, I can't tell you.
Yeah, I'm telling you, with the setback there, because it Y's right there, so instead of it just being 100 feet wide, it's like 200 feet wide as it splits in a Y that makes it impossible.
Yeah, I mean, if there's any way, I'd suggest it, but if there isn't, I get keeping, you know, where you're at and doing what you're doing to pretty it up and so on, and go from there. So thank you.
You know I've looked at it many times and tried to come up the best plan.
Well, I...
You know me.
I know you've also got some extra pictures of it from some places. Aerials and whatnot, so... Yeah, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Altman. I'd like to open up for public comment. Do we have... Oh, sorry, Youth Commissioner Lindsay. All righty, so I'll go ahead and open up to public comment. No public comment. Anybody on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom for public comment.
I will close public comment. Commissioners, any? You good?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion?
Oh, motion. I make a motion to approve a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of American Canyon, California, approving a design permit and variance for redevelopment of a construction yard and boat and RV storage into a 400, sorry, 540-unit mini storage facility at 4484 Hess Road in the General Industrial Zoning District, APN 058-320-003 and 058-320-002, file number PL22-0031.
I will second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Goff?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mohammed?
Aye.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commissioners, again. William Heave with the Planning Division, and I'm here to speak about the Watson Ranch Lot 8 subdivision project. So let's start with the location map. This site is a very long rectangular strip of land that's proposed to be single-family homes. It's shown in the yellow here. It is directly north of Watson Ranch Lot 10, Harvest subdivision. To the north, we have the public park zone. To the south, we have the Harvest subdivision. To the west, we have the future Watson Ranch Lot 7. And then to the east, we have the Promontory subdivision that was approved last year. So... So this is the site plan for the project. It is just 25 lots, all in one row, and it's directly north of Cartier Street. In addition to the 25 single-family lots, this includes three public parcels. Here's the project description. The project is about 2.3 acres in the Town Center Medium Density Residential 16 Zone, or MDR 16. The project is to develop 25 single-family residential lots and the three parcels. Access is all from Cartier Street. And the project is an extension of Watson Ranch Lot 10, which was approved about two years ago. The lots range from 3,600 to 5,600 square feet. But most of them are 3,600. It's the 2N one that's a little bit bigger. That's 5,600. Here's two photos from Dottra Street in Watson Ranch. Right now, it's vacant, and they've submitted a grading permit for it already, and they started, will start grading it shortly. Here's an aerial photo that we got access from the property owner, AC1, and Terry McGrath's team. And there is the Lot 8 shown within the red. So that corner circle of Marcus and Cartier is going to turn into a T intersection, but they're using it as a roundabout for now. So there's the 25 lots, and the perpendicular streets are going to be Pooter and Dottra. And those are actually where the public parcels are located at. Not too many specific issues, but I'll go over them. It's affordable housing, the public parcels, the Watson Ranch Specific Plan Amendment. And we'll talk a little bit about the architecture and enhanced aesthetic wrapping for two of the lots. So to begin, the affordable housing, the zoning code requires projects of five or more units to provide 10% of those units as affordable housing. But AC1 provided 186 units of affordable through the Lemos Points Apartments. So this project complies with the affordable housing requirements through the Lemos Points project. The three parcels that I mentioned, Parcel A is the closest to Marcus Road, and Parcel B and C are designated to be future paseos so that folks can travel from Cartier Street northward to the future park. They're going to look like the paseo that they have, we have between Pooter and Marcus, as shown in the photograph. And it's a good way so that people can just walk to the park or ride their bike to the park instead of driving around Cartier and up. And then Parcel A, that's closest to Marcus and Cartier, is proposed as a private parcel for landscaping and most likely a monument sign. The next issue is the Watson Ranch Specific Plan Amendment, which was approved last year. And the project site is actually shown right here in the, very close to the center. And previously, it was part of a public zone and also a park zone. But after the Specific Plan Amendment, the public zone and the park zone got merged, and then they developed Lot 8 on the south side of it. So there was a lot line adjustment that was completed, and with the Watson Ranch Specific Plan, the zone got changed into MDR 16, which allows for a single-family residential. Architecture, this is the same architecture that was approved for Lot 10. Three different types, farmhouse, ranch, and traditional. The approved designs were two-story houses, about three to four bedrooms each. And the houses with aesthetic wrapping, which I'm going to talk about, will have these enhanced sidings that are shown below. And so the aesthetic, enhanced aesthetic wrapping, that's the two houses that are on Lot 1 and Lot 25. So the endpoints, those will have the enhanced aesthetics. And then the rest in between will have their regular designs. And that's about it for the project. We began our outreach in the beginning of March, went through the same channels as we do with every project. Our subscribers have actually increased to 4,300 people now, and no comments were received for this project. STAS recommendation is to recommend approval of this project. This project is, requires the City Council for approval, so the Planning Commission will be a recommendation body. And the project is consistent with the Specific Plan, final EIR, Environmental Impact Report, which includes their mitigation measure studies. And the project is, complies with all of those sequel studies. That's all that I have for Watson Ranch Lot 8, 25 lots. And I think the applicant is online?
We do have Mr. McGrath joining via Zoom.
All right.
So, just one second. And I'll ask you to unmute yourself, Terry.
Hello, everyone. Sorry I couldn't be there live tonight. William pretty much covered all the bases. It's just the 25 lots are a little bit of an odd configuration, but as he alluded to in the presentation, they're really left over from what was originally intended to be the school site and now is a much more robust park. And so this was a way to add an interface on the south side of the park and the north side of Parcel 10 to create an edge there. Other than that, I really don't have much to add to his presentation, and obviously, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. I'd like to open it up for Commissioner questions. Youth Commissioner Lindsay?
Hi, so I'm not too familiar with any other plans that are going on with it, but just the fact that they're, it seems like they're adding more houses to that area, and I'm kind of looking at it as William brought up too, like, instead of going and driving all the way around to get to the park, I see it's right behind Walmart, too. So would there be any plans to add like another street to that area to access Walmart easier? Would they have to go all the way around into the highway to get into Walmart?
Well, you have to cross a railroad.
Right, that's also another thing that I thought about with that question, too, because I do see that poses an issue.
We're working on that right now at Rio Del Mar. And ultimately, the project will probably have two major crossings. One's at Rio Del Mar, and then currently, there's a public at-grade at Watson Lane to the north. And if, when Newell gets extended to SR 29 of Green Island Road, you'll have another rail crossing there, but there's no way to get across the rail with an additional street into Walmart.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was also something I was thinking about, too. That railroad does pose a big issue on that spot, but thank you. That answers my question.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Goff?
Terry, have you thought about a different type of crossing there? A pedestrian crossing or a bike crossing or the, you know, up and over versus a car crossing? I'm just thinking about access to the retail area over there and a way of getting people from those homes there directly as opposed to circling all the way around or back and forth. I don't know if there's the same restrictions dealing with the railroad and pedestrian or bicycle cross.
It's a great question. My sense is that you'll probably see at least one of those. Not sure where it will be. You know, we're trying to, we're trying to do Rio Del Mar, not as a separated crossing, but an at-grade crossing. And that allows us to incorporate a lot of ped, bike, et cetera, which is not, you know, from an east-west access point, it gives you, it gives you pretty quick access into that retail to the north. But my sense is there'll probably be potentially one at the south, so more towards South Napa Junction, where there's an existing private crossing there today. And then there'll probably be one to the north. Again, a lot depends on sort of the ped cycle connection, not only to the Vine Trail, but all the other ped and bicycle paths throughout the entire city.
And then I just have a couple other questions for you. They really have to do with aesthetics around the back of the homes, which will be right directly to the park. Is that the same fencing on the back of the homes all the way down, or is it an upgrade fencing?
It's a great question. So the homes are going to look different than what's on... So this is, this is a template map, what's in front of you tonight. I mean, technically, the homes have not been designed. We do not have a design permit on them. And I'm hoping that the homes look different than the homes on Parcel 10 in Harvest. And then in terms of your question about the interface to the park, we're working on that right now in the grading plan because your topography moving west to east for a home site, plus or minus, is gaining about two feet in elevation. So the homes will have a series of retaining walls as you're stepping again from the west to the east. And all of that is contemplated on the south side, you know, where interfaces with Harvest, all the driveway cuts, the interior roadways, et cetera. I think what we're going to do on the north side, where the park backs up to those homes, right now, we're talking about a rough grading plan that we have in front of the city. We met with the city staff, I think it was last Friday, coincidentally, and we worked on the grading plan, not only for another parcel, Parcel 7, the extension of Marcus across the left, but also the park site. but also the park site. And I think where we landed was that the park would not necessarily be your classic active soccer fields, lacrosse, et cetera. And so that would give us a more gentle grade. Again, if you move now from east to west, from top to, to bottom of that site, we'd probably be at a two percent grade. So it would be sloping essentially with the homes on a slope grade. And then at one point, we've looked at giving the houses direct access to the park. But I think with the Paseos, what we would want to do is, is create an interface where the Paseo goes through lot, yeah, subdivision eight, where those Paseos go through there and interface with the park. You'd have, you know, a, a, a natural sort of outlet for people, rather than just have mangates in, in backyards. And there's a project in Napa that has it, that's been, that's been pretty effective. But I think in this particular case with the grade, it's probably better to use the Paseos. So to your question about the fence, you can see that we're pretty particular about the, the fences. And I think Rio Del Mar is a good example of fences that we build. I think the Good Neighbor fence between the back of lot eight and the park would want to be something that's more reflective of what we've done on Rio Del Mar. You know, on the, on the north side of Rio Del Mar, that's backing up to Harvest, which is, you know, definitely a significant upgrade over what you, you see in Artisan and Harvest in terms of the, the Good Neighbor fences. So I'd want to see something that reads more like what we've done on Rio Del Mar than what frankly, Dr. Horton has done in their Good Neighbor fences in their backyards.
Are you looking for a little bit more vertical on those fences?
You mean in, in height?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I think the city has a six-foot height limit.
Realize who you're talking to, Terry.
What's that?
I said realize who you're talking to.
Yeah, I know, right? You're a tall guy. I would have to climb up on the fence to see over it. You can just stand there and see over it. I'm not opposed to a taller fence. In fact, if I had my way, I would have built a taller fence on Rio Del Mar. I would have added at least two more sections. You know, and those are, I think if I remember right, those are six-foot cuts on, on, on what we did on Rio Del Mar, or six-inch cuts on Rio Del Mar. So I would have added at least another foot. I think a lot of it depends on, on how far the fence is from the backyard. Because the closer it is to the back of the house, if that fence is tall, it has a tendency to kind of crowd the house. But if there's some space to the backyard, then you can get away with a taller fence. You just don't want it to feel like somebody, in somebody's backyard that they're sort of boxed into it. But you can also see what we did on Rio Del Mar. We left a quarter inch or a three-eighth inch gap in between each one of those horizontal cuts of six inches to let light through, which makes a huge difference. And then we offset them to give them some detailing. So again, I would probably, I mean, and that's all self-imposed. The city didn't impose the fence on Rio Del Mar. That's self-imposed. And so I would probably do the same thing on the north side of, of parcel eight. And if the city allows me to do a taller fence and it works with the, the scale to the house, then I, then I would not be opposed to it at least.
Okay. Final one is about the Paseos. Are they going to be lighted in any way, shape, or form, solar lighting or some type of lighting?
There'll probably be low-level lighting. You know, because again, neighbors are pretty sensitive about lighting. I mean, we've had to come back and retrofit a bunch of the streetlights with shields, because the LEDs today are so bright. And they, you know, you can buy a, you can buy a shield that essentially shields it. I don't think you'd want to have any lighting that, that sits above, you know, a normal height, just because then it starts to get into the, into the, into the homes. I think you're much better off if you're something that's waist, waist-higher lumber, so at least the path is lit.
And how wide are those? Are there bike paths, right, isn't the bike trail connected through?
William, do you have that right offhand? I don't have that, I don't have that committed to memory.
I think they're twenty feet wide.
Twenty feet wide?
Yeah. If Edison is that correct, yeah. We have our public works person here who knows more about the specifics of the widths.
Good evening, commissioners. The Paseo is about twenty foot wide and, and the path is about twelve foot wide. So enough for a bike lane, multi-use.
The landscaping in there would be upkeep by the city?
It will be, right now, the Paseo in Latin is HOA.
It's HOA, yeah.
Oh, it's HOA, okay.
Yeah, lighting right now on the... Sorry, go ahead.
The lighting right now on the, on the, on the Paseo that's already built is like a bollard type. And it illuminates the, the path.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking. I wasn't thinking of downlighting at all, but some way to illuminate that path between those houses.
And there are landscaping also on both sides.
But HOA is required to maintenance those. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. Good questions.
Commissioner Altman?
Thank you. Just a, a couple, and then I'm still going to harp on the Paseos because I've got a couple of things that, that you've kind of done a great job, Terry, of, of explaining, but that I'm totally unclear on. So as I look at the first of the slides, it shows that the Paseos are going to be about, you know, three to four homes in from the edges. My question isn't on that, but it is with these effective pathways between homes, what kind of side fencing on each side of the Paseo is there going to be? And how is that going to compare to the, you know, the normal, as you were talking about in regular, that Dr. Horton's doing of Good Neighbor fencing that we would expect to see on other lots? I would assume that with the Paseos, there's going to be a bit of an upgrade on that fencing, especially if you're going to be doing lighting and, and you'd want something that would help to kind of keep the light out of the home and the yard and so on.
Is that a question?
Question, comment, whatever, you know, fill me in.
Well, as you guys can tell, I care. And, you know, I continue to care because, yeah, there's a lot more homes to build and got a hotel to build, ruins and so on and so forth. So as I tell people, no one cares more than I. And doesn't mean that I get it right all the time, because I don't. But the, the, I go back to the fence on Rio Del Mar. Nothing, and separate apart from this project, I've built a lot of fences in my life. And nothing bugs me more than somebody building a fence and then, you know, you're coming back a year later because, you know, traps moisture, boards are touching the ground, or posts are rotting out or whatever, just drives me crazy. So you can see on the Rio Del Mar fence, that's a really, really expensive fence. That fence cost us five X of what a Good Neighbor fence normally would have been on Rio Del Mar. Truly cost us five X. And, you know, those are, those are, those are steel posts. There's airspace between all the rails. Those are, you know, those are, that wood is rebuilt from the, from the glass mountain fire. I mean, that's all recycled wood from burnt fir trees. It doesn't touch the bottom, doesn't touch ground, doesn't touch dirt or anything like that. So our, to your, to your question, or semi-question, it would be, I think, you want to be careful in that you're not creating an active nuisance with these Paseos. You know, it's really designed for people in Harvest. You know, that subdivision to the south have access to the park. I mean, it, it's truly what it's designed for, and the walkability. And so between the lighting, the height of the fence, and the quality of fence, all those things are super important to me. So, you know, without getting into a ton of detail, I'd say that fence is an upgrade, just like the fence on the backyard is going to be an upgrade, because people are going to, you know, people from all over the project, as well as hopefully from all over the city, ultimately use Park X. And, and, you know, I want a fence that fifteen years from now still looks like the fence I put in day one. And you can see Rio, again, back to Rio Del Mar fence, that fence is going to look like that for the next fifteen, twenty years. And the only maintenance will be if somebody comes along and tags it, we'll pop one of the boards out, put another board in. Those are slots, so you can just literally slip the boards out, slip a board back in and, and be on, you know, be, be back in business. So anywhere where there's, that are highly trafficked, you know, by, by pets, bikes, et cetera, and that represent the overall quality aesthetics of a project, I want whatever that is to be a, to be a, something that I can stand on. So, yeah, to answer your question, a lot of scrutiny will be given to those Paseos in the back of those yards, as well as the design of those houses.
Good, no, thank you. I mean, it, it's because I, I think the Paseo is a really good idea. But it, but it's just like, if I'm looking to buy one of those homes that's right on the side of it, it's like, wow. On, on the one hand, it's nice because you've got a little bit more side space. So during most times, it's probably going to be a little bit quieter on the one side. But then you've got the issues of, yeah, but everybody's walking right by my house constantly. And that, it's like, wait a minute. So, so it, it's trying to find that, that appropriate balance, and it sounds like you're well-focused on it, Terry, so.
Yeah, you want it, you want to activate. So again, if you look at Rio Del Mar, those streets dead end, a lot of those streets dead end, I think there's three or four of them that dead end. Those have, you know, a DG surface on them that connects the end of those dead end streets to Rio Del Mar sidewalk. But you can also tell what we did with those really big, big forty-year-old olive trees that we put at the end of each one of those, those dead end streets. And I, in the end, you know, I'm a believer that it's great to hear kids in the park, it's great to see activation. You just want to be really careful not to create an active nuisance.
Right. No, good. I, again, thank you. And that, that really was it. I mean, the short guy over here sort of stole some of the other things I was going to ask, but... We're, we're not building yet, so there's no, there's no need to talk about solar at this point, you know?
Well, solar, solar will be there. I mean, every house has to be, you know, solar ready.
That's now state mandated, so.
It's, yeah, so it's not even, it's not even a topic of conversation anymore.
I win.
You win. You definitely win.
Now we just need condominiums.
Dancing is coming.
But no, that's it. Appreciate it. So you're a good sport, Terry. Thank you.
I do not have any questions. I'd like to open it up for public hearing. I'm sorry, public comment? Do we have any public comments? Anybody on Zoom?
We do have Mr. Justin Hamilton-Hall on Zoom. Just bear with me for one minute, Mr. Hall. All right, I am going, I have asked you to speak.
Hi, good evening. This is Justin Hall. I have lived in American Canyon for thirty-nine years. I want to see, I know this is not a topic, but I just went so patient getting, hopefully getting a new house over, right, right, Karen Dummer near my house, that there's no sidewalk there and there's no, nobody there build a house. But I seen some, one guy put the deck up there and he told me we're trying to keep the garbage o- o- away, because people piled the garbage on the, on the hill. I don't know, this is a topic, but I'm very patient. We have no sidewalk there. And I didn't need, I wouldn't be probably going to look at build new house over there, or house. And I don't know, this is a topic, but I'm very patient. I live here thirty-nine years, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Anybody else on Zoom?
There is no one else on Zoom.
I will go ahead and close public comment. Any last minute? All right. Ask for a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move to approve a resolution of the planning commission of the City of American Canyon, California, recommending that the city council of the City of American Canyon approve a vesting tentative subdivision map for Watson Ranch lot eight to create twenty-five single-family home lots on a two-point-three acres within the Watson Ranch specific plan medium-density residential sixteen, zoning district located north of the Cartier Street. Assessor's parcel number zero-five-nine dash four-three-zero dash zero-one-two and zero-five-nine dash four-three-zero dash zero-three-seven. File number PL twenty-two dash zero-zero-two-four.
I like the way you read those numbers, and I will second your motion.
Thank you. Nicole, may we have roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Goff?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mohammed?
Aye. Okay, let's move on to management and staff oral reports.
Thank you all. Really appreciate the continued support. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Mohammed. I don't have too much of an update for you. I'll just go over the interesting parts. On the first page, the very top, we have an application, oh, it's already starts with the number two. The Lodge Apartments is proposing to gate their entrance ways. And so there's some technical issues with that, and so we've prepared a comment letter and look forward to getting their response to that.
Have they presented an explanation as to why after so many years they feel they need to gate?
The, the reason is for security. They didn't elaborate on statistics or quite anything other than just limiting the entrance.
Yeah, and I believe since I live in that area, they do, they're under new ownership now, I think, or not ownership, but I think they have a new manager over there as well. So I think that's also one of their concerns, just like adding more stuff to it, since I think that was something that one of the old people that were working there were talking about. But since they left, the new people came in and were like, let's just go ahead and push forward with it. So I believe that's why they're doing it now.
Great, thank you. See, on the bottom of this page, the SDG two-seventeen, there was a minor modification there with a well-known tenant that makes sparkling wine. I'm not at liberty to say. But anyway, it's, it's just was recently approved, so I'm sure, I'm sure the name will be revealed soon. Perhaps in time for Mother's Day. Let's see, on the second page, the SDG two-twenty warehouse building, we just recently got the, they were preparing an administrative draft EAR. And now we've got the administrative draft EAR and already started digging into taking a look at it. It's always a lot of fun to read an EIR. So we're, we're going through the quality control there. Not a whole lot different than, than a children's book of where's Waldo? Let's find what's not right and note it. There's lots of construction, as you've seen, still going on, nothing really noteworthy with submittals or completions. On the city-initiated projects, the accessory dwelling unit and housing element implementation ordinance that the planning commission saw was approved by the council on March nineteen, and we're going to second reading next week. So nice to get that moving forward. The comprehensive general plan, now that we have amended the general plan so many times with different reasons, we're going to be able to take that and, and help us amend the general plan. So we're, it's going to be a more robust and, and stronger general plan. We had a meeting with our consultants last week, getting the environmental impact report buttoned up. We're going to be adding an extra alternative to the, the EAR that looks at Watson Ranch and, and what might be also possible if you were to maximize the zoning intensity. The specific plan is, limit of the number of homes is far below what you could build if you took the maximum of the zoning. So we're going to, to, since there are some parcels that are already built, they're, they are what they are. But the remaining parcels, we're looking at how to maximize those and, and what would that look like in terms of additional dwelling units? So that will be an alternative in the general plan EIR that wasn't in this first draft. that wasn't in this first draft.
But we're also looking at whether we want to maximize that.
That's right, that's why it's an alternative. And what's, what, what happens in an alternative than a general plan, or rather than in an EIR, is there's a matrix that says, here's, you know, here what might be more impacts or less, you know, from various different perspectives. So it's, it's always an interesting read. So we'll be looking forward to moving forward on that. And that concludes my review, unless you have any questions.
Yes, just curiosity, because I missed the round break. What's the, is there information on the construction timeline or chicken game?
I know the, the, the applicant had an aggressive schedule. Perhaps they'll make it, yes.
Thank you, Director Cooper.
So just, I see we have a building permit for Canyon Estates.
We do, a custom home. And it's the first one. And what's really nice is the applicant is, is a resident of American Canyon.
Anybody we know, can you share?
Perhaps, I think everyone knows. I, I don't have their name committed to memory, but I, I think this person was in the Citizens Academy. So it's, it's a well-informed resident. With, with good taste.
We all, who, you've seen the plan, so I'll have to trust you on that.
It's a nice house. With a local architect, Mr. Craker in Napa.
I will ask, just because I periodically bring it up for RINs. Anything with any of our cannabis guys? Or is that just BOA?
I think one of them for sure is. A second one has disputes with the property owner that they're working through. And the third one, I haven't talked to them lately, but I think they're sort of doing what they want to do.
It's, it's, to me, it's just amazing, all the clamor from the initial, oh, you gotta do, you gotta bring, it's going to be such a tax, oh my God, it's going to be great. How many years after the fact are we?
It's a tough industry.
So, yeah. I think those of us who were a little skeptical at the beginning may have given up on something. So, but thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Director Cooper. Commissioners, do you have any items you would like to report on?
Not a thing.
All righty. The time is seven forty-three, and I hereby adjourn the March twenty-eighth Planning Commission meeting. Good night, American Canyon.